This is your Select Board meeting for Tuesday, October 27, 2020. And I always forget to say this meeting's being recorded. If anyone else is recording this meeting, please let the Chair know, or Carl, or Cindy. Pursuant to Governor Baker's March 12, 2020 order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, and the governor's March 15, 2020 order imposing strict limitations on the number of people that may gather in one place, this meeting of the Select Board will be conducted via remote participation to the greatest extent possible. Specific information and the general guidelines for remote participation by members of the public can be found on the AG's webpage. The town will persevere to use conference call capabilities regularly for other parties to listen in and participate accordingly. If not possible, we will post on the town's website an audio recording as soon as possible after the meeting. So if we can please start by standing and going through the pledge of allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First thing on the agenda is public comments. Does anyone have any public comments that they'd like to address to the Select Board at this time? Okay. We have a payroll warrant number 2109 dated 10/29. Dated two days from now, is that right?
Carl? That would be 10/27. I'm not sure who put that date in there.
In the amount of $234,534.44. And I need a motion for the regular session minutes of 10/2020.
Joe Diddy will make the motion.
Russ Fox will second.
Doug Moglen, aye?
Joe Diddy, aye.
Russ Fox, aye.
And we need a motion for the executive session minutes for 10/2020 as well.
Joe Diddy will make the motion.
Russ Fox will second.
Doug Moglen, aye?
Joe Diddy, aye.
Russ Fox, aye.
Okay, first order of business is a memo from Lieutenant Robert Landis regarding the appointment of auxiliary police officers. And he writes, "As we move forward restructuring the auxiliary police as directed by the Board of Selectmen, I'm submitting the following names for appointment." So Donald Day, Paula Flam, and Nicholas Baldiga. Questions or comments before we move to a vote on that?
Chief, how long do they have to get up and running with you? I don't do sign language.
It all depends on what they're bringing to the table. We just, you know, as far as what trainings they have or don't have, Lieutenant has that list. So I'm not sure on each personal, on each person.
Let me rephrase that. Chief, they need to participate, right? So you're not going to hold a slot for three or four months if they're not doing anything.
My standards hasn't been that way, so I can't see it being any different when it comes to auxiliaries either, Joe.
Thank you. That's all I was worried about.
You got it.
Russ?
Nope, nope. I'm fine with this.
I have one question, Chief. One of the officers is a current reserve. Is he going to move from reserve to auxiliary?
Yes, sir. He has already submitted his resignation as far as being a reserve, but wished to stay on as far as an auxiliary.
Okay. Then this all makes perfect sense to me. I'd entertain a motion to appoint Donald Day, Paula Flam, and Nicholas Baldiga as auxiliary police officers pending all the other yada-yadas.
Joe Diddy will make that motion.
Russ Fox will second.
Doug Moglen, aye?
Joe Diddy, aye.
Russ Fox, aye.
Perfect. Southwick Public Library requests for elimination of fines. Okay, allowing Joe Diddy back into the library after a 25-year hiatus.
Oh, no. Are you blocked, Joe?
Yep.
We'll fix you up.
Yeah, it's all right. It's all right.
So.
I'm used to it. And I didn't do all that stuff they said. That was, it's just, those were rumors.
All right.
They weren't lies. They weren't, I don't lie. I could have had something to do with it, but not all of it. I believe Chief Bishop was involved.
Um, yeah, so I don't know.
I don't want to say it was a while ago, Lynn, but they were stone tablets and he can't lift them to bring them back.
Oh, I got you. I got you.
It was Brutus. Kevin thought Brutus was eating the books.
Yeah, it was Brutus.
Anyway.
Yeah.
Um, yeah, so I don't know if you all got to read the memo that I sent over. I'm happy to go through it quickly with you guys, or if anybody has any questions or anything.
I had sent you a note earlier today. I read the memo.
Yes.
And I had sent you a note earlier today, and I, hopefully you can speak to some of it.
Yeah, of course. As far as, as things not being brought back in a timely manner, I'm, it's not a major concern. I mean, I think the people that are going to be late are going to be late regardless. Um, in my experience, I've worked in both places that do and don't charge fines. Um, at least in my experience, it, it doesn't make a whole lot of difference. Those that are going to be late are going to be late. Um, I think the, the benefits of the, the good customer service and the good relationships that it creates far outweighs anything that is, is late. Um, you know, obviously we'll still charge for anything that's lost, damaged, missing parts, anything like that. Um, but I think it's just, it's just a good move in a positive direction for us. And I think as of August, we had 134 people that were blocked from using us. Um, so hopefully we can get to welcoming quite a lot of people back. As far as what we are forgiving, we were given a spreadsheet of all the fines that were owed to us from everyone. Um, and it included about 1,700 people. Now, mind you, this is, this is for things that, um, that go out in our system too. So, so it could be somebody from Westfield, uh, you know, Munson, North Adams. It could be anybody. Out of that list of 1,700, there was about 600 Southwick people. And from those 600 Southwick people, it came down to about $1,500. Now, within that $1,500, it could be fines, it could be, you know, missing, things, missing parts that they were charged a couple dollars for here or there. So it's not an exact number. So I'm going to say it's about roughly 1,500 that we're forgiving. Again, in the grand scheme of things, it's not a huge, huge amount of money. And I think the, you know, the benefit far outweighs that.
Lynn, the, your inter-library borrowing group, Cedar Mars and these other organizations. So obviously, sometimes when people are ordering these books, you're getting them from other libraries. You're getting them from other collections.
Yeah.
And library network, which helps subsidize our inventory holdings, offering to people.
Yes.
Um, if, if they're okay with this, because they would also be.
Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah. And as a matter of fact, it's, it's the network. They are encouraging member libraries to go fine-free. Um, as of right now, about 46% of our network libraries are fine-free. Um, and in the area, most others, I know Westfield just went. Um, so it's becoming something more and more common. And again, you know, I think what, what we plan to do and what has worked well for me in the past is, um, is simply just putting, you know, a guilt jar on the desk. So if anybody is really inclined to donate, they're welcome to donate. But, you know, it's, it's again, they're really trying. The reason our network is really pushing us is that it makes it more accessible, especially during this time when people are really hard up and short of cash, you know? And, and charging 10 cents here, 20 cents there. I mean, in the grand scheme of things, it really, it doesn't add up to much. And it makes people happy. So, you know, I mean, it's, people are really appreciative of it.
Carl, does the Board need to take a vote on this, or is this something that's decided by the library trustees?
Well, we never could, uh, you know, though Lynn had some informations sent to us. We didn't have an ordinance to, to that effect. We do not have a charter that called for it. So I, I think what you're doing is you, you're really going to act on and concur with a vote of the Board of Library Trustees.
Yep, and they, they had voted to approve this unanimously on October 13.
Right, so you, you're going to support their, their actions.
And Joe, the Maura, Maura Diddy at MBLC, no relation?
Maura says, no, she knows you. She says hi. So I talked to her. She's like.
That is my stepsister, actually. Yes. Yeah. Wow. So you're dealing with Maura. That's cool.
Yep, yep. Yeah, Maura was the one who helped me out yesterday with questions about, you know, approval and everything.
Hopefully she said good things.
So the Board voted for, to have Mike McMahon make good on the 1,500, and then we're going to adopt this?
Well, I, I thought Russ Fox would say that's at least 200 registered voters. He'll be happy. And if there's any way to be the Russ Fox Memorial giveaway, he likes to make sure his name's mentioned somewhere in there, and then we'll be fine. Other than that, Doug, I think we're good.
I thought your fines were 1,250, so 1,500, you know, that's only really, you know.
Yeah. I've given back 300 a year and I'm still having.
You're on a payment plan.
Ice cream cones. Ice cream cones. Ice cream cones, yeah.
I will gladly take payment in the form of ice cream cones. That is fine with me.
Pleasure of the Board, gentlemen.
It's a great thing.
Is that a motion?
I'll make that as a motion.
Russ Fox will second.
Doug Moglen, aye?
Joe Diddy, aye.
Russ Fox, aye.
Ta-da.
Great. Thanks everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you. I get a new library card.
Might want to wait a couple of days just to get all the paperwork done.
Next year, next year.
Motion to approve funds reallocation for DPW projects. So this was in your folder and sent out. Some of the projects are actually running at or under budget. Holy cow.
Yeah.
Nicholson Hill Road, Depot Sidewalks, North Long Yard project came in slightly under budget. So, um, is Mr. Brown with us? Mr. Brown is here. Mr. Brown is muted.
No, I'm not muted. Thank you.
Now you're not muted. Do you want to speak to this, Mr. Brown?
Uh, yeah, so the list in front of you are all the projects that were allocated through the $2 million appropriation from the 2019 town meeting. Uh, those products are just about wrapping up. Um, the products that are completed, more of them came in under budget. So there are some dollars that we have to talk about to spend. And what I'm looking to do is take some of those dollars and dedicate that towards some crack ceiling work. That's something we do every year, and there's no shortage of crack ceiling projects that we can do in town. Uh, and then I still think that once the, the remaining two products are complete, uh, that being Jeffrey Circle and also on Cedar Street, there'll be a little bit more dollars left over. So at that point, once those projects are closed out and, uh, we know what those costs exactly were, uh, we can have another discussion about, you know, what to do with that remaining balance.
So this would be done in the spring again? It's getting a little late in the year for this year, right?
Uh, more than likely, but you never know. We might be able to get some work done this fall. Especially crack ceiling. Like, that can happen late, late through the year, and that's a pretty easy contract to, to get underway.
Okay. Carl, what is the process here?
Uh, well, the, the Board as road commissioners should just make a motion to, um, act on the request by the DPW director to permit these changes to be made.
Via motion or via just nodding of our heads or what?
A motion.
Joe Diddy will make the motion to move the funds around to continue our road projects.
Russ Fox will second.
I mean, it's not like there's not enough work to be done with the money we have, so.
Right.
Uh, Doug Moglen, aye?
Joe Diddy, aye.
Russ Fox, aye.
And do you want to talk to any of the other projects as they're finishing up?
Sure. Um, so the last two projects are Tammy Lane and Jeffrey Circle, um, and also Cedar Street. Uh, the first project on Tammy and Jeffrey Circle, uh, they should be paving that road, uh, either the end of this week or, or early next week. And that will wrap that up for the most part. Um, there has to be some looming and sitting done after the paving work is done. Uh, but that will carry over for another week or two. And then Cedar Street, those, uh, the contractor started that work this week. Uh, they did some test pits and, uh, they're going to certainly get some pipe shortly. So I expect Cedar Street to wrap up in the next two or three weeks as well. And everything else on the list is, is all done.
Yeah, Randy, I saw the paving trucks going up to do Fred Jackson Road Culver paving today.
Yeah, so that's another project. Yep. Uh, thank you for reminding me of that one, Carl. Yeah, so they're paving, uh, they, they put the base course on Fred Jackson Road today. Um, and, and I'm hoping that that project will be wrapped up by the end of this week, early next week.
That's good. Dozens of trucks.
Projects are wrapping up pretty quickly here.
Looks like the easy money's on early next week, because the next topic is going to be apropos, right? Because, um, it's supposed to snow Thursday into Friday now.
It's just a dusting, and it's mostly, they said it's going to be on pavement or on, uh, grass.
Well, I hope you're right. But, uh.
That's what they said in, uh, October of 2011.
It's exactly the same weekend too, isn't it? You know what I mean? Holy cow. So you got salt, Randy?
Yes, oh yeah, we got plenty of salt.
Okay. Um, so the next is also from Randy Brown, contracted snowplow operators. And, um, Mr. Brown is recommending, um, Kane's.
Same roster as last year.
Do I need to go through it? So the same roster as last year? And at the same rate from last year? So I just would need a motion or discussion on this list?
I don't have a problem with it. I'll make the motion. I just get nervous when I see, you know, lots of vehicles under one contractor. Should something happen to that contractor, we'd be up the creek. But, um, they were here all last year and it worked out fine. So Joe Diddy will make the motion for the list that's in front of us.
Russ Fox will second.
Doug Moglen, aye?
Joe Diddy, aye.
Russ Fox, aye.
Great. I know that, uh, great brooks done by my house for the last forever years, and they always do a spectacular job. Nice guys, so.
I think all, all the guys are doing a great job.
Yeah, we, uh, you know, they all do a great job and, you know, Southwick kind of makes some of the other towns look really bad.
Yeah. We have our moments.
Okay. All right, next we have a request for a water sewer abatement. Jenna, I don't want to mispronounce your name. How do you pronounce that? Casell?
Casell, yes.
Okay. Amount of the requested abatement is $407, because, why don't you tell us?
Um, so this past summer, spring, we did have to fill our pool, um, our in-ground pool. Um, we irrigated our lawn and had to reseed it, and we power washed our house and fencing. So when I, I, I did the math, and that was the amount that did not go into the sewer.
Randy, where'd he go?
Yes, I'm here. I, I don't know if I broke up on you or not, but I'm here.
Uh, your picture disappeared for a minute, but now you're back. Are you familiar with this?
Uh, yeah, this, uh, Babin request came in yesterday. We did reach out to the homeowner. I'm not sure if any information came in today, but we just asked for some information in terms of what dates and times this, these activities took place. Uh, when we looked at the, the water use, um, history, um, the, the breakdown, it wasn't clear to us. You know, we didn't see any like, you know, big spikes on any one day in particular where these activities took place.
Well, the Chairman, generally what the Board's done is it's usually designated one of its members, like Mr. Diddy, to, as a sewer commissioner, to review this with DPW and the applicant for the abatement so that they can, um, uh, dig down deep and see, uh, whether it's justified and whether it meets the policies that, that DPW, um, uses for approving these types of issues.
Mr. Diddy, are you up for that?
Absolutely.
Mr. Fox, you okay with that?
Absolutely, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Diddy, it's your assignment.
All right, Jenna, I'll be reaching out.
I appreciate that, and I hope, guys, Randy, I did not receive any phone calls right now, so I apologize for not getting back to you.
It's all good.
Not a problem.
We'll get it worked out.
I love these. All right.
Okay. Hope, good to see you.
Nice to be seen. It's been a while.
Yeah. Uh, amended Select Board meeting schedule for the rest of 2020 and the beginning of 2021. We're going to change our meeting days to Monday, starting November 9. So our, our scheduled meeting is going to be Mondays at 6 o'clock PM. And I don't have any issues with this schedule, because, uh, not going anywhere. Anyone else? Where are we going?
Chairman, I would just mention that we're not meeting next week.
Correct. We will not be meeting next week. We have, there's an election going on and we'll just wait until the 9th.
All resources of the organization are supporting the election activities.
I must say, if, uh, the entire Town Hall staff, including the, especially the treasure collector clerk's office is doing yeoman work, they're working, what, seven days a week for the last two or three weeks?
Yep, and nights too.
With the, what's that?
And evenings.
Yeah, to get this, uh, early voting done. Hopefully it's going to smooth out the process. There's been literally thousands of people have come through Town Hall to vote, right?
Uh, that is correct, uh, Mr. Chairman. I think, uh, let's see, today's numbers, um, oh, pretty good number. There was, uh, we already had over 2000, 2870 have voted by mail or in person by early this afternoon.
So over 3,000 people already voted in the town of Southwick, so.
Yeah.
What's our, what's our number? 6,007?
Six and change.
Six and change.
Yeah.
Perfect.
Is the registered count?
Great.
And usually, I mean, I don't know what our turnout is, but the, even if you look at, you know, if it's 60 or 70%, it would turn out for this, you know, a very much contested presidential and other ballot races out there, a good chunk have already voted, right? Because you're already over half of the total. You're at 50 already, so.
That's correct, Mr. Chairman. Usually we've gotten in the low to mid 70 percentile, and that's over 4,000 people coming through the building in one day. So this is going to greatly reduce the number of people that will come through on the actual election day.
And does that number include the mail-ins and everything else too, or is that just people that have come through town?
The one I just gave you included the mail-in too.
Great. So, Joe, did you vote yet?
I voted, yeah.
Russ? Sorry, Russ.
Yes, sir. I have voted.
I, I, I as well. I voted on Sunday. It was very efficient and smooth.
Lot of space, because the tent was down, so you had all kinds of parking.
Well, the cement was still there.
Obstacle course.
That's why I, I didn't let my wife drive over there.
Think a bus just drove over me.
Wasn't a gas pump there that she would have hit, so.
Stop.
Wife would have been fine.
Now that's going to be immortalized forever in the annals of Southwick history. Cindy, did you vote?
Not yet. Can't, can't find a parking spot.
Carl?
Uh, I will be voting shortly.
Very well. Chief?
Yes, sir. Done. And the wife.
Just to, to show Ann, see who took advantage of the, the hours.
It's so convenient.
It, uh, super, right? We did it on a Sunday even.
Yeah.
Um, anyway. We did that. AG Commission appointment for Mr. Cook.
Mr. Chairman.
It's actually, Dan spelled wrong. Cook. Cook on here, cool on there. All right.
He's a cool dude.
Yeah, well, I, I voted for him just because his name was cool. All right, but I'll still vote for him. His name is Cook. Someone said Mr. Chairman.
I, I was just correcting, make sure he knew it was Mr. Cook. No, Mr. Cool.
He's still a cool guy, I guess, but all right. So we need a motion to appoint Mr. Cook to the AG Commission till next May.
Joe Diddy will make that motion.
Russ Fox will second.
Doug Moglen, aye?
Russ Fox, aye.
Fantastic. Any update on the short greetings for the 250th festivities? I haven't, I've been watching the videos on Facebook of Southwick, England. For those that, uh, haven't seen them, they're hilarious and very well done.
Some of them too, yeah. What a beautiful town, common.
Yeah, it's gorgeous. Yeah. And they're lucky enough to have an old church that wasn't bombed to oblivion in the war, so. For real, that's, it's probably the oldest building in that area. We'll have to reach out to Mr. Putnam and seeing what's going on there.
Mr. Chairman?
Sir?
I did reach out to Mr. Putnam, who's the chairman of 250th. And he has asked that, uh, we do two things. One, that we do the closing for the video that'll be, uh, out on the 7th of November. And also he'd like us to individually, like, do the center of Southwick. Uh, one person could take the congregational church, one person could take the Southwick Inn, one person could take the old library, um, and do a separate video, uh, one, one each. And I would suggest that maybe we could ask Mr. Steinhardt to reach out to, uh, Mr. Clark to arrange that we do something next week.
Uh, do you have available dates, each one of you?
I am flexible.
We'll make time.
All right, if you could, if you, uh, gentlemen could send me your dates of availability, we could line up Dennis and, uh, just let the cameras, uh, uh, free flow and see what comes out of, um, that effort in the backgrounds and what we can send to them as a message of greetings.
The only other thing I would add, Mr. Chairman, is, uh, Mr. Putnam was hoping for the, you know, the, uh, ending of the production, that the three of us could be socially distanced somewhere probably in front of Town Hall, and, uh, you, Mr. Chairman, could make a one-minute statement, uh, basically thanking, uh, the 250 Committee and wishing everybody a happy birthday on behalf of the town of Southwick.
Great.
We could get in front of her.
And, uh, tell Mr. Clark that we know that the camera puts on 10 pounds, so only bring one camera.
Okay.
Any other old business that we need to rehash? Most of this stuff is carrying forward.
Yeah, no, all that stuff's carrying.
Joe, Russ?
No, sir. Just obviously the reminder of elections next week. I think you already referenced it, but, and don't forget, our north lobby entrance, uh, will be closed for the access to the assessor's office and the town clerk treasure collector's office, because, um, those staff members are going to be, um, working with, uh, people who call in for telephone assistance for customers and online, but they're also going to be repurposed and helping out with election activities that day, as will a lot of other town staff.
That was a great segue to new business there, Carl. One other piece, I'm not sure if it's old or new, um, but I came across it in my stack of stuff that I've been meaning to bring up is, can we carry the LED streetlight discussion forward either under old business?
Sure, you can put it wherever you want.
Please.
You want to, okay.
And maybe we can bring it up in our next meeting in a couple of weeks to kind of. And maybe we can bring it up in our next meeting in a couple of weeks to kinda, and invite Randy to, this was something we had talked about, and now that they have the rate, and then whenever Source was in, we did talk about it a little bit too. Maybe tie all that together.
Okay. All right.
And then, uh, carried under new business that'll move to old businesses, last week, um, Carl and Chief Bishop and Chief Anderson traveled to Chickapi to have a look at, what's it called? Westcom?
Yes, sir.
Westcom, which is a, uh, new regional dispatch operation that's starting in Chickapi right now. And they hope eventually to move to a location, uh, just off the Mass Pike. And we're gonna explore that as a potential, uh, option for us to, uh, for regional dispatch in this area. I mean, it's been, we had gone into it a few years ago. Um, in another opportunity, that one didn't work out, but we learned an awful lot from that process. Um, but we're gonna take another long look at it. It, it may be opportune, given the timing of some personnel and some other significant capital expenditures that are coming our way. Um, and the general gist of how the state is funding and going to continue to fund nine-one-one operations, um, in localities and their general move to more, uh, regional type activities, this may be one of them. So we're going to explore this in depth. Um, so we're gonna carry this under old business as it's significant, you know, it has a potential for significant impact, positive and negative, but impact on the town, um, as we move forward. Other new business?
Uh, yes, Mr. Chairman. The, um, um, I was looking at the documents that we have in our office and we, uh, spoke to the building commissioner today. We have a, um, the need to just do our renewal with the city of Westfield intermunicipal agreement for the sealer of weights and measures function. Um, the initial agreement, um, will be, uh, would be expiring, but we can do up to, um, written agreement of both parties for three additional two-year terms, so the board needs to, um, authorize one of its members and myself to work with the mayor's office to execute that, um, request to extend the terms of the IMA for sealer weights and measures services.
Mr. Fox? You want that one?
Absolutely, Mr. Chairman.
We don't, is that good enough, Carl? We need a vote.
Yep. Nope, that's good enough because it will, it will come back to you as an agreement.
But I figured. Just making sure.
All right, Mr. Chairman.
Joe, Russ, new business?
All I got is I forgot to talk about, uh, the Saturday, right? Trunk or treat drive-through.
Now's your chance.
Yeah, that's all I got.
Well, this Saturday at the high school, two-thirty to, two-thirty to when?
Three to six, I believe.
Three to six.
Unless you're working it, Mr. Moglen, then you need to be there at two-thirty.
That's what it was. So they, they've been telling me two o'clock for three weeks, so don't, that way I'll be on time, right?
And, and in costume, costume. You gotta dress up just that way.
Oh, I feel a cold coming on. Um, it'd be great. I mean, there's, what do they tell us? To brace for a thousand kids?
Yeah. That should work out just fine.
They'll be checking IDs at the door?
Yeah, making sure you're still a child. Russ, you're all set. You'll be fine.
Hope we'll, we'll get you in, don't worry.
It should be fun. Chief Bishop's got really involved this year with being his last year and, uh, you know, we should have a good time.
Well, even after he's gone, he's still gonna be a pillar of the community and still do all this stuff.
Well, he'll be a pillar.
We have a photographer coming, so.
Wow.
Not me. I'm actually doing the trunk or treat in Westfield, so I'll be like, I, I'm doing a trunk.
Okay. Great.
All right, well, I know, um, my employer's doing it and, uh, we're excited about it, and I think it's gonna have a good turnout. Hopefully the weather looks promising at this moment. But we'll see.
It's happening regardless.
Oh, I know, but it, I think it'll be a
Yeah.
a, a bit of a downer if it's crappy weather. But, you know, last year's one was a, you know, absolutely a mob scene, so if we do a drive-through this year, it should be, you know, hopefully it's well attended. Um, and I know the fire department's doing it, the police department's doing it. Um, a bunch of other, I, do you know anyone else who's, who's signed up to participate?
Yeah, I can't let all the secrets out. Some of them have some pretty fun things that they're gonna try to do, so.
Awesome.
Yeah.
So you'll have to come down to see what all the secrets and
You gotta do it, yeah.
surprises are.
The car can be decorated, the driver can be decorated, you know, not just the kids.
Okay. Anything else, Mr. Fox?
Uh, no, sir.
Then I would entertain a motion to adjourn, and we are not meeting next week. Everyone, please exercise your right to vote or don't complain. Wanna make a motion?
Joe DeeDee will make the motion to adjourn.
Russ Fox will second.
Doug Moglen, aye?
Joe DeeDee, aye.
Russ Fox, aye.
Okay. Be well, everyone. Thank you.
Good night.
Bye.
Bye now.
Thank you.